Please stand and join me in the place, ladies and gentlemen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Kaczynski?
Here.
Commissioner Wu?
Here.
Chair Protem Crandall?
Here.
Vice Chair Blackwell?
Here.
Chair Rowland?
Absent.
Okay, we'll move on to special orders of business. Any special presentations? Seeing none, we will move on to the minutes. Has anybody reviewed the minutes from the adjourned regular planning commission meeting of February 5th, 2020, and have any comments?
All move, we approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to oral and written communications. Members of the audience may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone and, if you desire, state your name and/or city of residence for the record and make your presentation. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll close oral and written communications and move on to the consent calendar. First item, and only item, is the speed cushion on Avenida La Cuesta, East El Oriente, and Avenida Caballeros presented by Mr. Mangoig.
Is anybody going to agendize it, or are we just going to move it?
This is on the consent calendar. Would anybody care to speak to it?
I'd like to do it.
Okay. So we will pull the item for discussion per Commissioner Wu's request. Mr. Mangoig, would you like to present the project to us?
Mr. Mangoig, Senior Civil Engineer, I don't have a presentation but I'd be happy to answer any questions, yes.
My question is on Avenida Caballeros. There, it's a two-lane, and going up here, it's certainly appropriate. I want to, if we need to do the speed hump on the downhill side, the side that's next to the freeway.
I'm sorry, so the subject roads are Caballeros from El Oriente to Palazada, right? So that's a two-lane roadway? And you're referring to that side of the roadway? We would propose to put the cushions across the entire way so that the cars couldn't go around them?
If a car, because there's a center, it's painted in the middle.
Oh, okay, that's El Oriente. So for wide streets like that, we would continue the cushions down the middle, and they come in different patterns so that those cushions that are within a median would have a yellow striping to denote that they're part of a center median. So we wouldn't propose to install them with any brakes, we would just go across the road.
Well, the Oriente has a three-lane, there's a middle, there's a turning lane. I'm talking about the Caballeros.
Which is a two-lane roadway?
Right. They're painting the middle?
Yeah, there's a center line.
There's a center line.
Right.
So I think all you need is to, just to cut some cars, all you need is to put the speed hump on the mountain side. Is that right?
Well, the way that Orange County Fire Authority wants to see it is that they want their first cushion on the center line, and then they want to work out from there. So on that roadway, we're anticipating three, and it would span the roadway. There are speeds going both uphill and downhill on that roadway, so we wouldn't propose to do just one direction or the other. Otherwise, you would have cars that would try to go around, probably against traffic.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Mangoig?
I'll make a motion to move the project, approve it to City Council.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
It passes? Five-oh.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item eight, public hearings. Time limitation for applicants is ten minutes. All other speakers, please take no more than three minutes. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed ten minutes, and the public testimony. To facilitate the meeting, for all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentations to three minutes, as I had mentioned. Following closure of the public hearing, the planning commission will respond to any questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. The first item up is item A, 431 Caie Gomez Cultural Heritage Permit 19-250, The Marlow Residence, being presented by our planner, Mr. Correo, this evening?
Yeah, I'm looking for David, I don't see him in the audience. There he is.
Okay. So Mr. Correo will be presenting this request to consider a 3,386-square-foot, two-story single-family residence on a vacant lot located at 431 Caie Gomez, adjacent to a historic resource. The project site is in the RL zoning district, which is residential low. Mr. Correo, hello.
Hello, good evening.
And we did receive one letter from the public on this matter.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Good evening, Chair members of each commission. The project is located at 431 Caie Gomez. It is a through lot in the residential low zone and abuts a historic resource at 429 Caie Gomez. The map to the right shows the project site highlighted in yellow and the historic property dotted in blue. The project site is currently undeveloped and occupied by minor landscaping, ground cover, and a few stepping stones. The image to the right shows the lot's topography and a downward slope at the rear of the lot towards Avenida Crespi. The applicant proposes a 3400 square foot, two-story residence with an attached, street-facing two-car garage that would be accessed from Caie Gomez. This request requires a cultural heritage permit because the project abuts a historic resource. And this review process ensures that any visual and physical impacts on the historic resource are prevented. Here is the site plan, showing the proposed residence in orange and the adjacent historic resource in the red dash line. At the south of the proposed residence, down here, there's a wall plane break and inset where the home transitions from one story to two stories, and I'll show you an elevation that shows that. Most of the historic resource is parallel with the one-story portion of the project. This site plan also shows the distance between the historic home and the proposed residence, which is at 12 feet at their nearest points. We also see the offset parking spaces on the top right, over here, that further articulate the front elevation. The residence is designed in the contemporary cottage style with metal roofs, horizontal siding, espresso wood trims, and fascias, and white stucco. Landscaping in the front yard is proposed, along with turf block on the driveway for additional permeable surface and landscaping, as you can see here on the right, in front of the garage doors. This past December, the project was reviewed by the Designer View Subcommittee, where they determined that no changes to the design was necessary. Since visibility of the abutting historic resource is limited due to its topography, existing vegetation, and a two-story front addition to the historic home, the project does not create any negative visual or physical impacts on the historic home. So here's the south elevation that faces the historic residence. So here we see that plane break here, where you see the transition from one story to two story. So this red dash line just highlights the area that's parallel with the historic resource, and you see a diagram to the left to see for some context. Again, this is that wall plane break line to help the eye. The adjacent historic resource is at, again, 429 Caie Gomez, it was built in 1929. The 2006 DPR form survey calls it out with its integrity and good condition. You'll see to the far right of the image, there's a two-story addition that made the historic property ineligible for national registry listing because of that, and I think just because of the screening of the original home. One of the required findings that the planning commission shall make tonight is that the proposed project will not have negative visual or physical impacts upon the historic structure. Staff is recommending that that find to be made. So in the report, there was a discussion, a section that talked about the sidewalk waiver. Per the requirements of the municipal code, engineering staff added standard condition of approval 3.10. Engineering staff recommends that the planning commission remove the condition since the project will meet waiver criteria. And that may be a little confusing, so we do have engineering staff present to provide some answers if there are any questions. And most likely, it's unlikely that there will be a continuous sidewalk in Caie Gomez, which is why engineering staff is recommending removal of that condition. Again, we did receive one letter from nearby residents. In summary, the resident is requesting that a condition be added to require construction vehicles to park on East Avenida Magdalena. And I believe we provided that via email, along with the map, yeah. So staff recommends that the planning commission make the required cultural heritage permit findings, and determine the project be categorically exempt from the requirements of CEQA, and approve the project subject to findings and conditions of approval. And we do have both the architect and the homeowner present for any questions. Thank you.
Questions of staff?
Yes, David. Do you have the landscape plan you can show us?
I do.
I understand you sent to me, but I didn't have enough time to check that.
I have a hard copy here if you want, and I do have a screenshot here.
In your report, the report says 50% of the front yard needs to be permeable and landscaped with native, drought-tolerant landscaping, which... I like the more specifics, but in the past, we were told quite often that just making the hardscape permeable would qualify. Can you clarify that?
Can you?
Do they have to be living material?
It's a combination, that's been a previous understanding and interpretation, that it's a combination of both permeable surface along with plant material. So in this case, the applicant, without, if you see the driveway, here, it's noted in keynote five, five there and five there. Initially, they were proposing just hard surface, so just concrete, but we found that without adding additional landscaping, they weren't meeting the minimum landscaping requirement. So they added turf block to give us more of a permeable surface and some grass areas.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I'd just like to get oriented with this request that the trucks, construction trucks, park on Magdalena, and I'm kind of looking at the map, and I can't see Magdalena. It doesn't look like it's very close to the construction site.
The stretch that the resident is referring to is this right here. So Magdalena loops around from down here and up over here.
Okay, so that's Magdalena.
So this is Magdalena right here.
Over there, okay. So they want construction trucks to park there, if they're there, I mean, if the workers are there all day, park there, not to impact delivery?
I believe the resident is present, so she may be able to...
Well, maybe there would be a couple of comments.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to orient where the street was.
Commissioner Kaczynski?
Hi, David, I just have a quick question. I was a little confused. Engineering added condition of approval 3.10, but then you want us to remove it?
Correct. We also do have engineering staff present to answer any questions, but my understanding is that, per code, that condition shall be included for any discretionary projects, and the planning commission has the ability to remove it and not have the applicant come back and request a waiver. If the condition remains, the applicant will have to submit a waiver and submit it to the city manager.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question for you, David. Regarding the landscaping in the back, is there a, it looks like there's going to be some removal of some mature shrubs and small trees? And I didn't see anything in the landscape plan that indicates there be any kind of replenishment of plant material.
Uh, yeah, we did, again, it was reviewed by the Cities Landscape Consultant, Pat Murphy. Don't recall the exact species that was proposed there, but Pat did recommend that whatever species was proposed, that it not be used, just due to slope stability. So when it comes back during the building permit process, they'll have to submit something, again, for Pat's review, that's more feasible in that area.
I understand the slope stability component is important, especially up in that area. I'm looking at it more of a, from an aesthetic perspective. From Avenida Crespi, it's still going to be highly visible to folks along that right-of-way. And I don't see anything in the elevations that really tells a story on exactly how that's going to look. Do you have anything in the file that you can show us?
Ice plant. The plan is ice plant.
Sorry? What was it?
Ice plant.
Ice plant only?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. And is that going to count towards the, is that part of the 50% calculation that you did?
That wouldn't count towards the 50%, that would just be the front.
Okay, could we count it?
No.
Why can't we count it?
It's code asks for a minimum in the front yard only.
So there's no calculation in the through lot? There's no requirement for a through lot?
No.
Is that true? Okay. Okay, great, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that concludes staff's presentation, so we have the applicant here. Would the applicant like to speak?
I only have one item. Our first DMT meeting, my plan on like page A3 or something, had the City of San Clemente standards for curb gutters and sidewalks. And at that meeting, Zach decided, I'm working on the house next door at the same time, that neither of these jobs are going to require sidewalks, and he decided that then, that was in July, but I can't tell you why. But that's section 3.0, it's kind of behind us. Fair enough?
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like to open up the public comment section. We do have a card from Ms. Margot Bochamp.
Yes.
Would you like to come and speak?
Good evening, my name is Margot Bochamp. I'm appearing on behalf of my mother, Dorothy Bochamp, who is in her 90s, and by the end of the day, she gets a bit tired. She has been a longtime resident since 1990 at 437 Avenida Crespi. My parents bought the property in the 60s. I have a couple corrections to make on the letter. It would be under item number one, where the two cultural heritage houses, 429 Caie Gomez and 420 Caie Gomez, the next line down, there's a remodel, not at 435 Caie Gomez, I made a mistake, it's at 433 Caie Gomez, so if you could allow that correction. The concern is the parking. These are old streets, it's very hard to even navigate up Crespi, the hairpin turn. Actually, the gentleman had a nice view of the streets, if we could go back to the street slide. There you go. Okay, so this is a hairpin turn, and at 447, there's ongoing construction there, and so much so that it was parked up with the construction, with the low boys and that sort of thing. Parking on Crespi, my mom's at 437, she has to back out of her driveway, and when the vehicles, whether they're construction or the vans or whatever the construction workers, it makes it very difficult to even back out. I myself have experienced it multiple times, to back out, to go up to Gomez. Crespi ends basically at 437. This used to be a dead-end street before they built Presidential Heights as historical information for you, and then this house is on Caie Gomez, as are these houses. But this was very tenuous for cars coming around the bend with the loading and unloading of the big supply trucks. In fact, one cab and big rig with the trailer knocked over the fire hydrant across the street from 447 where the construction's going on. So these are narrow streets here, even when you have, with the homeowners at 433, when they have cars parked and the neighbors here parked here, it's very, I just have to go this way, down to East Avenida Magdalena. So what I'm asking is if there could be some sort of a condition for this project going on at 431, for all the workers to park over on East Magdalena. It's a wider street as opposed to parking on Crespi. That would make it a lot easier for cars navigating around the hairpin turn, and people don't go slow around that hairpin turn, so it puts anyone backing out of the driveways here at peril, number one. But parking on both sides of Crespi, here and here, for any construction workers working on either of these projects, is going to make it very difficult to even see oncoming cars, the trucks, whatever, block the view. Other than that, my mom's very supportive of this project, I do want to say that, and it's wonderful. I formerly knew the land, the homeowners that owned the property, and from a historical standpoint, so it's time to see your lot being built. I assume you're the Marlos, sorry, I misspoke your name. I'm done. So hopefully, you'll put some sort of a condition in for the parking, for the residents, all the residents on Avenida Crespi.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
I've got a question for you, Gabriel. Through construction, there would be some conditions placed as part of the regular permitting process that would keep the construction site free of debris, free of obstruction in the right-of-way, that we have minimum widths in the street that we need to maintain, is this correct? So all this would be handled during the construction phase?
It could be, but to make sure that's in there, it wouldn't hurt to add a condition, and I know, David, I don't know if we were able to check with Public Works that that would be okay as well, that condition was added?
We did, Public Works actually did not support that condition, given that we have legal parking on those streets. And I forget what was the other reason, Zach, if you can remind me?
I'm not sure how you'd actually enforce it. So if I can't ticket somebody, I don't know how to just say, "No contractors allowed." So I don't know how that would be enforced.
Zach, when you have hauling from a site, when they're moving a lot of dirt, you come up, or most cities come up with a hauling plan that has the route and whatnot, and when it can be done, would it be inappropriate to have the applicant provide a construction traffic plan where basically he's agreeing to, "This is where we'll park things," and then it would be a violation if they broke from using that plan?
See, that's where I'm kind of curious, like what violation it would be, a violation of the conditions of approval, so it wouldn't be something...
It would probably be similar to having a site that was not being maintained properly or in control kind of thing, where it's not installed properly.
And we have standard codes, I think that's where you're getting at before, is all sites have to be kept clean, and roadways have to be kept open, and that's just in our municipal code, in the streets and highways codes. Once we start getting past that, and somebody wants a large, you know, the concrete pour day, they'll come in and they'll pull a traffic control permit, or at least they're supposed to. And so that way, we can block off an appropriate area for them to stage. We try to limit that to just the day or two, or that they need those bigger pickups or those drop-offs. So we encourage people to follow the rules and let us know when they're going to do those bigger things. In terms of a haul route, that's usually done on a bigger, you know, earth movement type of project. project, and this one probably won't have a lot of earth movement. So I don't know if we've ever done it for a drop-off and delivery of lumber, per se, or something like that. I'd have to kind of look at the streets just to see even if we were to go that way with a condition of what would be preferred. And it seems like Magdalena's probably a little less traveled, or there's not homes on one side of it, at least. But at the same time, yeah, I just don't know how we would enforce the, you know, no construction parking. I just don't. People have asked for it over the years. I just don't know how we would ever enforce it. So it's a pretty big precedent to start setting, and gets down to just enforceability. I'm not sure how we'd really do that, other than constantly getting calls, and then now showing up and saying, well, are you a contractor of this person versus that person?
So we're really more concerned with any sort of encroachment into the right-of-way? So if there happens to be some temporary encroachment, and it's causing, you know, a circulation problem, then somebody could contact the city?
Correct. And I don't mind giving her my contact information. And so they would call and talk to the engineering department. We get out there. Most bins and trucks and all those things should be standard size. They should be parked up against the curb. So we do issue permits for construction debris bins, and tell them where to put it typically. So if she does have one existing right now, by all means, I'll give her my number, and she can call me, and I can take a look to see if it even has a permit, first of all. And then if so, we can call CRNR and tell them, hey, you put it too close to this drive approach. You know, let, give it a little bit more room. We need to move it. And so they can actually come out and move those things.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah. Question for the applicant, or your, is that, I, when I built my house, I had a similar situation in Southwest, and I had my, where parking's constrained in the neighborhood. And I had my general contractor kind of manage that, go put his card out at every residence door, to call him immediately if there was issues, like driveways blocked and things like that. And so we, and we had him, if there was going to be a labor there, a framer is going to be there all day pounding nails, or, you know, whatever your skillset you need, then we tried to designate a parking area for them. In our case, it was an alley up off of El Camino Real. In your case, your general could probably really manage the neighborhood by directing the day workers to go to Magdalena. I don't know if you've selected a builder yet, or a general?
Yeah, we do. And actually, it's not going to be a big crew. I mean, he'll have his sub people come in, but he pretty much does all the work himself. So it's not like we're going to have 20 people there. Our general does all the work. He'll stub out the electrical and the plumbing and that.
He's going to frame it by himself?
He did in the past, yeah.
Well, in other words, there won't be multiple-
You've got some caissons to pile down.
The framing crew wouldn't be showing up in like multiple vehicles. It's a pretty tight-knit group, you know?
I know, but there's a, there's five framers, but have them park their five cars on Magdalena. Have the general contractor manage the skillsets he has on site.
We could do that.
And have the general drop his business card off at every people on the curb, down below, up around, to cover the neighborhood. So you got a problem, call me, I'll handle it. And that's the way I did it when I built my home, and it worked really well, is that we keep it the lowest level, because generally, the general contractor should be on site. If not, any of these offsite, you can get ahold of him real quick, or your own business cards, so that you can manage it at the lower level, rather than we end up in a code enforcement issue. That's just a suggestion.
Agreed.
That's the way. I did it with my house, and I think it'll work at the local level.
Commissioner Wu?
I have a question for Zach. If the general contractor or the owner wants to put a dumpster on the street, they need an encroachment permit from you, right?
Correct, they do.
If there's a loading truck there, at what point, whether it's the amount of stuff or the duration, at what point you need them to have an encroachment permit?
So anytime they're technically staging, or we ask for, bless you, bless you, for anything, even on a lumber drop, they're really supposed to be coordinating with us. And do every, does every contractor do that? Probably not. But if we drive by a site and we see an issue, we're stopping all the time and telling people, you got to get that out of here right now. And especially if there's any sort of safety issue. But there's encroachment permit anytime there's, other than a car, technically, is any type of staging in that right-of-way is. And we're pretty, you know, we're pretty conservative about what we would allow out there. So we're not just going to let somebody just have the whole street in the frontage and say, well, I need all my contractors to park, for example, for the next six months. Those are very few and far between we would ever even consider that.
What's the dimension of the street, curb-to-curb dimension, in front of that house?
On this street, I, like, curb-to-curb's pretty narrow. I'd have to scale it off. Yeah, a lot of those streets up there are pretty narrow. If there's parking on both sides, then it's probably 30. But some areas of town get down to 25. So that's where it makes it very tough to pass people. And that's very common to Southwest in general.
Well, I probably want to make sure that emergency vehicle can go through.
Correct.
So do you think we can prohibit parking on the other side of the street, just to make sure that whenever they have the delivery truck there, they take one side, and then they still have about 20 feet for-
Well, I mean, technically, as long as there's, if there's parking allowed now, then there should be parking, it should be safe to where people can still get by. And that's how a lot of our city is. So I don't know if, you know, if you start taking one side, it's almost that if anything, you're pushing now the parking and everybody else to in front of other people's homes. So as long as that staging and everything's done legally and parked, most of those vehicles are all allowed on the road. They're allowed to park where they are in a public right-of-way, as long as they're not too far from the curb and there's other legal issues. If somebody's eight feet off the curb and taking up the whole street, that's by all means, they got to call us, and they're supposed to coordinate that with traffic control and possibly putting up no parking signs for a day or two. But we typically don't do it for a whole range of a whole project, because it might not be needed, that whole project. So I would encourage them to come to us and let your contractor know. Just come to us well in advance and saying, hey, I'm going to need the other side of the street on the lumber drop-off day, for example. We'll give them no parking signs, and they can put that up several days in advance, so that they can coordinate that and not have anybody in the way, really, on those bigger days when they truly need a lot of room.
Thank you. Any other questions, staff? I'd like to close the public comments section and open the item up for discussion. Commissioner? Mr. Crandall?
Yeah, I want to say it was a pleasure working with the applicant and all during design review. When we reviewed it originally, it had a short driveway. They chose not to go through the process and moved everything back, so they have a legal-conforming driveway. As far as the sidewalks concerned, the existing neighborhood has really short driveways, and I don't see that a continuous sidewalk's going to be viable anywhere in our lifetime. Excuse me. So I'm in support of agreeing that no sidewalk is required there. Cultural Heritage permit, it does not impact the historic resource. And I am in support of the project. And they do have the ability now with moving the garages back, they've got a decent staging area in the driveway and front yard, that I think will be easier than some on that street to work the construction site. So I am in support of the project and look forward to it being built.
Thank you. Commissioner Wu was next?
I support this project. Last time in the design review meeting, the, one of the garages is really close to the street. And in addition to that, they want a waiver of the sidewalk. So I was a little concerned about whether we, I would support both variants of the setback in the sidewalk. And since they pushed the garage backwards to provide a full length of the garage setback, I have no problem with waiving that sidewalk requirement. On the bottom, a sidewalk will cause a tall retaining wall. On the top, Ms. Crandall just explained that all the neighbors doesn't have it. Until the road is very close to the downhill side, next to the intersection, there's a segment of the sidewalk. I just don't know why they put it there. But it doesn't appear to be feasible to have that continuous sidewalk on the side of the street. So I support it.
Okay. Commissioner Brown was next?
Okay. I got in the project, in the design review phase, I was the last, the last look. I guess the applicant's had a long, long travail, finally got to this point. I think it's come together quite well. And so I think I'm in support of the project. Looks like it's well thought out, in a way that relates to the cultural heritage house next door. There's, the house itself provides a lot of good setbacks. And so I think it'll meet, really add to the neighborhood, and hope you can pull off all your construction coordination while it's underway. Because I know there's a lot of other construction going on up there, particularly right around the corner, down below it. There's one house down there that's been under construction for quite a while. So I'm in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chichinsky?
I'm in favor of the project. I can make the findings. I'm glad that the applicant worked with the design review. And I'm happy that the project will have no negative or physical impacts on the historic structure. So I'm in favor of the project. Nice work.
Okay, well, I too am in favor of this project. I think it's a really nice design. It's going to add to the sort of, how do you say, eclectic overall palette, if you will, in design in that area. There's some very interesting residential designs up in the area, some recent ones that have turned out very nice. I think the sidewalk waiver makes sense to me as well, for the reasons stated by the other commissioners. I do want to say that I am concerned about the landscape in the back. I understand that we, we have a certain minimum requirement for the front area. In this case, I think that a low-growing plant material could work if it's maintained. I would like to see some screening from the lower end, but I think overall, it's going to turn out pretty, pretty nice. That the design on the back of the property is still very attractive. So there's really nothing to screen that I think would be an eyesore and require screening, or warrant any sort of screening. But I personally would like to see more landscape in the back on those slopes. Just as a general thought to pass on to staff in the future. I'd like to see some of the good neighbor policies in place. It's nothing that we can require, but as a courtesy of being a good neighbor, to communicate with your neighbors. Construction days, passing out the cards, the general contractor passing out his phone number, so that if folks have an issue, they have somebody to call. That's just a, it's a great thing to do. And those residents that are concerned, or see some sort of an impact, or some sort of a logjam, if you will, during, you know, peak construction with trucks, et cetera, just to call the city. We've already heard that folks will be out there right of way to help out. Sometimes we just can't help it in scheduling. Things go not always according to plan, and you get that. So we just try to work together as good neighbors and tolerate as much as we can. Okay, well, I think that we've all, Mr. Brown, you have a comment?
I was going to say I'll make a motion.
We'd like to, let's have that motion.
I'd also like to comment on some of the plant material on the back of the house, knowing the way the slope is up there. I would be more concerned about slope retention-type material back there than any other aesthetics. You know, ice, you got to get stuff in to grab that slope and keep it, because you have a pineapple rainstorm, a series of 10 days of rain, and you're going to want that slope to be stabilized. And that's more important to me than make some mobile area bush back there. So that's one thing you're going to have to work pretty hard, I would think. Okay, with that, I recommend the planning commission adopt and pass the resolution number PC 20-003, a resolution of the planning commission of the City of San Clemente, California, approving cultural heritage permit 19-250 Marlowe Residence to allow a new two-story single-family residence on a vacant lot located 431 Calle Gomez, adjacent to a historic resource, with the condition that we eliminate condition 3.10 on sidewalks.
Okay.
Second?
Well, before we do, and if I may add, the staff make those corrections, if valid, that the speaker spoke of, address discrepancies. You can note that and take a look at that and make that correction. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Five O. Congratulations. Wait a second, yeah. Okay, the, next item B, regarding APN 67902105, specific plan amendment 19-014, tentative parcel map 19-021, site plan permit 19-022, architectural permit 19-023, conditional use permit 19-094, the Artist Memory Care Facility. And our planner, Ms. Stephanie Rojas, is here to present the project. Hello.
Good evening, Vice Chair Blackwell and members of the planning commission. My name is Stephanie Rojas, senior planner for the city. The item before you tonight is for the Artist Memory Care Facility project, which includes multiple applications for a specific plan amendment, tentative parcel map, site plan permit, architectural permit, and conditional use permit. The applicant proposes to subdivide two and a half acres of a vacant parcel located at the intersection of Caia Frontera and Caia Olaverte. The site abuts the I-5 freeway, single-family residences, and multifamily condominiums, referred to as the Fair Harbor Neighborhood and Pacific Coast Church. The outlets are located across the freeway. The site is located in the institutional area of the Marblehead Inland Specific Plan. The general plan land use element designates the site as institutional. The site is currently owned by the Pacific Coast Church, and other developments have been proposed here in the past. Most recently, Lennar was proposing to construct a 75-unit townhome development, which was ultimately withdrawn. The project is a state-licensed residential care facility. It would be dedicated to elderly residents afflicted with Alzheimer's diseases and other related memory disorders. The facility is about 38,000 square feet in size. Access to the site would be from Caia Frontera. The applicant proposes to construct a access driveway wholly contained on the adjacent parcel, which would serve both the project, as well as the future development on the remaining vacant parcel. The parking lot is oriented towards the rear of the site, and it contains 43 onsite parking spaces, a trash enclosure, as well as an emergency generator. The facility is divided into four residential neighborhoods, which I've kind of shown in color here. Each of the neighborhoods contain a communal living room, den, residential kitchen, and dining room. These smaller-scale spaces are intended to ease resident anxiety through familiar surroundings. So the facilities are intended to not overwhelm the residents. The facility also includes a town center, which connects the four neighborhoods, and it features a community center, studio space for large gatherings and activities, as well as a beauty salon and health center. The site is within the Marblehead Inland Specific Plan Institutional Planning Area. The specific plan states that the contemplated uses at the time of the specific plan's adoption were churches and daycare center facilities. This specific plan is different from our zoning code, as well as other land use documents, because it does not contain a list of permitted uses. The current specific plan is ambiguous in terms of what types of other land uses could be permitted at the site. Therefore, the applicant is proposing a minor text amendment to clarify that other institutional uses are permitted through the CUP process. The applicant also proposes a change to the maximum height of walls and fences. And under their proposed text amendments, the maximum fence height would be determined through the site plan permit process. And this request would accommodate the unique security needs of institutional uses. No changes are proposed to the land use designation. The project is a single-story building. The applicant did take great care to design the project, keeping in mind potential view impacts to the single-family residential neighborhood across Caia Frontera. So as such, no part of the roof exceeds the 20-foot height limit of the institutional zone. The project also complies with the building setbacks and other residential development standards. As seen through this rendering, the site itself is located at a lower grade than the street level. The project utilizes a Cape Cod-style architecture. And overall, the city's design guidelines do not address institutional uses, nor does the specific plan contain any design policies. The project does comply with general guidelines for design compatibility. So for example, the project is compatible with the overall scale and density of the surrounding residential neighborhoods. Furthermore, the project complements the Cape Cod-inspired style of the adjacent uses, such as Pacific Coast Church. So due to the nature of the memory care facility, a perimeter fence is required for the resident's safety and security. The proposed fence would enclose three sides of the development along the north, south, and east elevations. Pictured here is the side of the development that abuts the Fair Harbor Townhome Development. It's difficult to see, because it all blends in, in terms of just the white coloring, but there is an existing block wall, which would remain in place. So the proposed fence would be behind that block wall. So really, the only part of the fence that you would be seeing from this side would be the top of it. Along this side, there is a large enclosed garden, which provides additional open space for the- for the residents, and it also provides a buffer between the project and the existing neighborhood. The landscape plan was reviewed during the DRC process. In response to feedback from design review, the applicant added trees along the site's entire boundary. The trees soften views of the development, both from Caia Frontera, as well as from the freeway. Additional trees are also proposed along Caia Olaverte to further create a buffer. And in response to feedback from neighbors, the applicant made an effort to retain existing trees onsite. Not colored here, but these two rectangles in the center are small outdoor courtyards that provide a additional open space and a secure setting for the residents. Design Review Subcommittee reviewed the project three times and supports the project as proposed. As detailed in your report, an environmental analysis was prepared by the city's consultant. The applicant prepared several technical studies to supplement the secret report, including a parking demand and trip generation analysis, a noise study, as well as a health risk assessment. With regard to parking, the zoning code allows the parking demand to be determined through a study. Specifically, parking data was collected from four other memory care communities in the area, and using the most conservative parking ratio, the project was found to generate a demand of 37 vehicles at its peak. The project includes 43 parking spaces, therefore resulting in a surplus of six spaces. The study also compared the traffic generated by the proposed use against a child daycare facility, which was the use originally contemplated for the site when the specific plan was adopted. The project is estimated to generate significantly fewer vehicle trips compared to a daycare facility. A noise study was also completed, and that analysis determined that various noise sources from the project, such as the emergency generator and parking activities, would not exceed the city's municipal noise standards. The only noise impacts resulting from the project would occur during construction. So, the consultant that prepared the noise study did recommend inclusion of additional noise mitigating measures, which were iraniously omitted from the resolution. So staff is recommending that these standard conditions for project construction also be included in your, in your resolution. And again, these additional conditions of approval are really intended just to minimize noise impacts during project construction. The overall noise analysis did not find that there was any additional noise mitigating measures needed related to the overall operations of the project. The applicant hosted a series of community outreach presentations to the neighboring homeowners' associations. The applicant informed staff that residents in attendance at the presentations were generally supportive of the project. The applicant was able to incorporate neighbor requests, so for example, the project will maintain all existing parallel parking spaces along Caia Olaverte, and they were able to retain the mature trees along the Fair Harbor Development as well. Staff did not receive any written public comments regarding this project. In summary, the project is consistent with the design guidelines, specific plan, and general plan. The project is also compatible with the scale and density of the area, in that it is a single-story building that complies with the 20-foot height limit of the zone. Furthermore, based on empirical data, the project will not create any impacts related to noise, parking, or traffic. City Council is the ultimate approval body for this project, so staff is recommending the planning commission recommend the following actions to the city council, and the tentative city council hearing date is March 17th. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation. The applicant, as well as the applicant's architect, engineer, and land use representative are all in the audience tonight, and we would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. I'd like to open this up for questions from the commission. Commissioner Brown?
So no staff members attended the outreach that the building?
That is correct, staff did not attend those meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Chachinsky?
During the design review, we brought up two concerns, one is the HVAC on the roof. The building itself is located at a lower level than the street, so you can see pretty much on top of the building. Have there been any, was there anything done to further screen the HVAC units?
I don't believe any additional modifications were made with regard to the rooftop screening, but I'd like to defer the question to the architect's applicant, if there's any additional details they would like to share.
Do you want us to talk to that, is you right now, I'm happy to do that, or I can do it at our.
Okay, we have other questions of staff, so why don't we hold that, and then we'll have you come up after, I'm sure there'll be other questions.
There is a second one.
Oh, sure.
Do you know if anything was done with the concern about the emergency generator and noise levels?
So, let's see. So there were some additional changes made in response to engineering concerns related to water quality, so the overall emergency generator is gonna be fully enclosed, and there's gonna be a roof as well, again, for water quality concerns. But as included, or as stated and detailed within, I believe it's Attachment 5B, which is the noise and vibration impact analysis, overall, the generator does not exceed the city's noise standards. So no additional requests were made to mitigate noise, since it doesn't exceed the city's noise standards.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Wu?
Stephanie, maybe this is a question for the applicant. How long will the construction last?
You know, unfortunately, I don't know the exact construction timeframe, I would defer to the applicant on that.
Can the applicant?
How long would it take? Right now? How long? Roughly 12 months.
Once completed, how long do you project to achieve the target occupancy rate, so the facility is in full operation?
Do you want those now, or we're happy to do those?
Why don't, are there any other questions of staff?
Uh, no.
Okay, why don't we invite the applicant up to answer the two questions regarding the HVAC visibility, and, and the build-out and occupancy question? Come on up, please.
And keep staff up, I'm trying to figure out the order.
Yes, yes.
Okay, keep this, okay. So.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Mark McGuire, on behalf of the applicant, good evening, we're excited to be here. I'll answer these two questions, and then we'll come back up and do, I'm not, I didn't, I don't have a formal presentation, frankly, we were gonna do questions only, pretty much, but, so we'll answer these two questions, and then we'll, we'll adjust accordingly. By the way, this is Rick Bell from Artist, the representative of the project itself. We also have Pastor Mark Ambrose from Pacific Coast Church, they're the property owners that are selling to Artist. This is Keith Palmer for the, one of the architects on the project, and then Joey Daggett is our civil engineer, so we were hoping, we think we've got the people that can answer the questions. On the question of the rooftop elements, the, is that, one of the questions was the hiding the air conditioning units on the roof?
Correct. And you're right, it is about, this is one simulation that we had, the units are in alcoves, and so I do think, you know, that they really won't stand out, they certainly don't stand out on the roof as standalone items. They're, they're in alcoves, which both provide attenuation and visual screening, but noise attenuation and visual screening, but we have not done anything like a monitor roof, or, you know, some sort of shed roof to completely cover them, or do anything. I don't think that's necessary in this case, given how they tuck into those alcoves. That's the answer on that question. So we answered the construction length, and then on the generator, so the generator really is only an emergency generator. We don't anticipate it being needed, except in the case of, you know, power outage for an extended period of time. It does get tested, I think once a week, we agreed that we would only test it between the hours of 10 o'clock and 2 o'clock, it's a 15-minute or so period to test it. It's a, it's not a diesel generator, it's a natural gas, is it natural gas? Natural gas generator, and it has an eight-foot wall around it. We specified the quietest generator that is out there in the industry, and with the walls that are around it, and then with the second wall that is already in place on the landscape buffer between this property and the townhomes, and then the distances to the nearest units, the attenuation is such that even when it's operating, it's probably gonna operate within the noise standards, although technically, emergency generators are exempt from noise standards, so.
Okay, Mr. McGuire, we had another, the other part of Commissioner Wu's question was the build-out construction time and occupancy, anticipated occupancy.
Good, good question, that I don't know the answer, but you know how long it takes to face the construction? 12 months for the construction and roughly two years to be at full occupancy by that period.
Okay, thank you. Do you have an engineer here who can answer some question on the noise?
On noise?
Uh huh.
Yeah, I don't know if Joe, yeah, I'm happy, I'm pretty familiar with the study also, so we'll back. This is Joey, Joey Daggett, Daggett from Gateway. What was your question?
Joey, on the trip generation and parking generation study, we listed two similar uses, one is congregated care, and another one is assisted living, as a comparison. At the end of the day, which one do we use to, as a basis for our trip generation?
Congregated care and assisted living, that's a good, I think. I don't wanna begin to be next round, which one?
So, Commissioner Wu, thank you for the question. So, the parking and trip generation analysis was actually prepared by an outside consultant, Lynn Scott Law and Greenspan, and the reason that there's different ITE trip rates listed within the analysis is because there is some overlap between these different types of institutional uses. And essentially, what they did was, the traffic consultant took trip generation rates from different types of institutional uses that are comparable to the proposed memory care facility, and then looked at what had the, the highest parking ratio essentially, what would generate the highest number of, I'm sorry, excuse me, the highest trip generation ratio. So they did that based on using a more conservative approach, and so ultimately, what they ended up using was the, I'm just looking at the data right now. They used the ITE trip rate for assisted living, so that's 2.6 trips daily, and that was the, the highest vehicle trip generating rate of the different ITE rates reviewed during the analysis.
Okay. On the, on the noise issue, since Commissioner Chachinsky asked the generator, I go there first. If you go to the LSA's study on page 29, 28, table U, emergency generator noise level, and the last column, exterior noise level, are those number, projected number, or, they're not measured number, right? The projected number, are they, how do we, where do we project them? When we say exterior, are we talking about standing next to the wall?
No. No, in fact, they, they made a point of going to the different exterior spaces of the different townhomes, so there's patio areas, they did not go from like the sidewalk, or there are some greenbelt kind of common areas, so they went to the, to the various nearest units, the exterior space that you would be spending a considerable period of time, you know, that, in your own exterior backyard, if you will, as opposed to like the street.
Our city standard is for the property line, just so you know. So it's, it's a little different.
Yeah, so again, this was informational in a lot of respects, because it was for the emergency generator, but again, it was my understanding that when you have certain common areas or streets, that you're, you're going to the, the nearest residence, when, when you have house to house, then the property line is tantamount to being at the next residence, but, you know, I'm learning as you're telling me that.
Well, because your number is very close to a threshold, 48.9, I think the standard is at the night time is 50. Let's go back, go to the other item, is the parking lot noise. On the parking lot noise, we used the criteria called LMAX, that's instantaneous maximum level of noises. If our trip generation projects the trip to be, at the peak time, I see 13 trips or 19, depending on which category we go. And those noises are from, according to LSA's report, traveling at slow speeds, engine startup noise, car door slams, car horns, car alarms, and tile squeals. At the peak hour, with the 13 to 19 trips, I would imagine they add up to more than one minute, so I wonder if we should use a one-minute noise level, which is five, which is lower. In other words, our projected noise level is 69, which is lower than 70 maximum. The 70 maximum noise level is, at any moment, no sound should be louder than 70 decibel. But our, but we also have the noise standard say continuously should not exceed 50 or 55, depending on the cumulative time period, so the maximum for one-minute cumulative noise is 65. And if you use five minutes limit, that would be 60, so, so I wonder if we should use that LMAX limit instead of a one-minute, I make, I mean, you think the five-minute limit may be applicable, but a one-minute should be applicable here, so. What is the reason to use the LMAX?
Okay.
Threshold.
Commissioner Wu, you know, unfortunately, I don't have the specific answer for this, but LSA did have this noise and noise study prepared by an outside consultant that is, does have the right qualifications to be able to prepare these noise, these noise analysis, and it was peer-reviewed by the city's environmental consultant, and they did confirm that the methodology and the way that the study was conducted is, is pretty standard in terms of how noise analysis is done. So there wasn't anything identified with this noise analysis that is out of the ordinary, everything that is included here is pretty standard with how noise impact analysis is carried out and conducted.
For a large project like that, does the city typically go to the project after completion, do a post-construction or post-operation evaluation, because those numbers are really close to the limit?
Right.
And you can imagine that.
I mean, with projects in general, you know, the city does have the noise control ordinance, so we definitely have those noise standards that we are able to enforce, and so if there are any complaints that are raised, either during project construction, or long after the project is completed, you know, we can certainly send out our code enforcement officers to investigate the issue and determine whether or not there is a noise violation occurring. But one thing I will add is that there is a condition of approval within this, I don't have the number in front of me, but with large development projects like this, prior to building permit issuance, they are also required to prepare an acoustical report that provides further detail in terms of just the noise levels that would be generated through the project construction and operation. So there is a standard condition of approval in condition, let's see. Conditions 4.7 and 4.8 are standard conditions related to project noise.
Okay, okay.
But we don't typically go there to do a field verification, it's a response, response to people's complaint.
That's the standard practice for code enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions of staff? Okay, I do have a question regarding the noise, so, just to be clear, the, there will be some testing with the generator, it's once per week, as per the applicant?
That's correct.
10 to 15 minutes?
Yes, 15 minutes between the hours of 10 a.m. and 2 p.m.
Okay, so, and, and also, when we're measuring sound and noise generators, it's to property line, so our code measures to property line, so just to be clear on that. That's a valid comment, Commissioner Wu, on the, on the vehicular noise generation. I was more concerned. I was more concerned with the, didn't think about that component, very important. I was also very concerned about the generator. And so I'm happy to see that the applicant has made efforts to, you know, mitigate any potential impacts. Just based on the report, the Kohler series that's being used is about 70 decibels at 23 feet. And the unit itself is more than 23 feet from the property line. Not only that, there's some barriers that are being placed. So did we determine, and I didn't see it in the report, what that decibel would be at the property line? Even though there wouldn't be a, there wouldn't be any sort of violation of the code, I can't imagine there would be. But what would that noise level be approximately with the wall around at the eight-foot wall?
They did do a table.
Because that material wasn't stated in the Kohler report, they used other materials like steel, et cetera.
Yeah, so we use that Kohler generator and then it has its own attenuation box, if you will, in it. And then there's an eight-foot solid wall around the generator. And then there's another six-foot wall, 15 feet from the property line until you get to Cayo La Verde that already exists. And it might be 12 feet on that side and then 15 on the turn. And I do want to clarify that it's not, there isn't a roof on top of the generator. There is a roof over the trash enclosure, but not the generator. But there is the eight-foot wall. The, so if I can just look at this table here. So it's just under 70 at 23 feet and then the distance, yeah, so none of these attenuate right, go right to the property line, which again, in this case, would be the street, the parking and then the street. But the closest one here is, you know, 85 feet, which is not too far from the property line, the nearest unit. So I don't have that information here. You can see that it's saying that the exterior noises go anywhere from 33 to 49 on, you know, at these distances. So I can't say for sure what they are. Again, this was kind of above and beyond. First, their approach was this is an emergency generator only, so, you know, but I, but I thought it was appropriate to include the information so that you knew, you know, is it cited in a place that's going to be problematic? If it does, in the event of emergency, you have to run for a while. I think it's going to attenuate pretty well, but.
Okay, it appears so. Thank you for that clarification. And one more question I have, Stephanie. So in the elevation here that we're looking at, it does not, doesn't match the current landscape plan. And the palm trees that are shown, the landscape plan shows a couple by the entry, not as many as shown here. And it also indicates a smaller palm. It's the Phoenix rovolini, which I believe is a little bit smaller than that, shorter than that. Is this a depiction of what the applicant expects to do or is this just, just for conceptual sake?
It's just conceptual. I don't know if the applicant's architect would like to clarify, but there was some discrepancies between the vendor that provided the renderings and the actual design proposed. So we, the applicant did have to go a couple of times with the renderer to fix, you know, minor inconsistencies.
Thank you. So the, these are earlier renderings that were done before our meeting with you. And since that time, the landscape plans, if you'll notice on the landscape plans, crepe myrtle trees have replaced the queen palms that were shown in the rendering. But we did not update the rendering. We felt we could explain it. But we have substituted crepe myrtles both at the front entranceway and also on both sides of the main entrance. So we've used the crepe myrtle. Great, thank you very much. We appreciate that. And we know that DRC had many comments about that. Just wanted to make sure there was clarification on the matching of exhibits. So thank you for that explanation. Any other questions of staff? Okay, so we can close the staff presentation portion and open, unless the applicant would like to come up and present?
Yes.
Yes, why don't we invite the applicant up to present?
Mark McGuire, again, on behalf of the applicant. I'm not going to take a lot of time, but again, I wanted to first, for your benefit, it's Keith Palmer is the architect who came up to testify. So again, we're happy to answer any questions. I do want to address the issue of the traffic. So the traffic, I think the traffic numbers are very conservative in the sense that they use a use that we're not, none of our residents drive. And a lot of those facilities and the assisted living facilities, they still assume some driving. So the number of trips that we're going to have are going to be fairly small and the trips are, you know, we have a building separating us from the other side unless someone drives all the way to the back to park and to, or to turn around. There is the ability to turn around right in the front of the building as well. So I don't think that those noise levels are going to be at the levels that you're concerned about. But the traffic analysis, I mean, the noise analysis was concerned about parking and it's really the shutting the door is really what it comes down to. It's not as if people are going to be honking their horn in the back of the parking lot. You know, there's no particular reason for bad conduct like that. But closing the door is something that we're very sensitive to. There is a wall, there's one townhome that's near, nearest the back of the parking lot that I've been, you know, trying to say, geez, what can we do to be as sensitive as possible to them? And I think as a management standpoint, I really do think we should encourage those back spaces nearest that one unit to only be used during the daytime because I think we'll have enough traffic, enough parking to not have to park right in that back corner next to that one unit. But as a, you know, I think that's something that we'll just do a, I mean, if you want to condition it, we're happy to put some sort of condition like that, that the six spaces nearest that one unit, you know, only are, you know, only used during the daytime hours or something where the LMAX is higher to 75 because it was close at 70. But otherwise, I think, you know, it should be pretty benign. And in fact, that's kind of leads me to what, the one thing I was going to say, which again, we've been working over, over a year with the city. When I was contacted by Artis to talk about possibly going under contract with the church, I was really excited because I thought this is a, this is a use that fits well with the site. It's consistent with the institutional designation for the site. It can stay within the 25-foot height limit. By the way, Stephanie did a fantastic presentation tonight and she's been great in shepherding the project through, she said 20 though, and I just want to clarify, it is 25. And so I thought, this is a great use for this site. It just generates such low amounts of traffic. It's a passive use. It can be designed consistent with the design standards with the exception of the higher fence. And I just really felt good about this as a good fit for the site. I want to thank the DMT members of the city staff for all their input on the project. We benefited from all of that. And I want to thank all the members of the design review subcommittee for their input through the process. And so again, we're here to answer any other questions. And then I also wanted to let Pastor Mark Ambrose come up and speak on behalf of the property owner of PCC Church. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McGuire. Mr. Ambrose, would you like to approach?
Sure. I'm not sure what I can add. I don't know, I may have known some of you. I'm trying to see if I've met you before. If you don't know me, my name's Mark. I'm a lead pastor at Pacific House Church. I've been in town for, pastoring for 25 years. And so I was executive pastor there for 10 and lead guy for the last 15. And so this is, this is new to me. You guys are at different levels with generator noises and stuff. So I don't know that I can add a whole lot other than the relational piece, which is very important to us. As you heard, round one, we were engaged with Lennar and it was 75 condos. And of course, this is new and I thought almost 30 revisions is normal, but I'm seeing that maybe it wasn't because we were at, you know, green space and where garage doors were facing and two stories and what was going on in the decks and umbrellas and, and it was just, it was pretty clear that it was a square peg in a round hole as far as the product goes. And the interaction there was very different. And then we were alerted to just this whole up and coming industry in need and service of skilled nursing, memory care, that kind of thing. We have some people at our church who have some of their parents in a memory care in San Juan and actually some people in our church that actually work in that. And so we thought, hey, let's explore that. And so hired a broker and went out to that industry. And there was about six viable purchasers at the time. And so we sat down and interviewed them. And from our perspective, Artis clearly rose to the occasion and not just financially, that's obviously a piece, but we didn't take the highest bidder. We took the one that we felt we would have the better partnership with and networking with because, you know, price is one thing, but they're your neighbors for the next, you know, hundreds of years or whatever, decades. And so the neighbor piece and being able to work together with them is super important. And so that's been a really surprising thing because we didn't have that kind of interaction with condos home builder. But this is something that I feel we can almost work together even after the construction, that we can supply some support for them and they ought to also be a resource for us. We've talked about reciprocal parking, shared parking, just a real working together and partnership. So that's, that's a real, that's just kind of the relational partnership side of it. And so, yeah, we're excited about the opportunity. To sell the property would allow us to have some resources to expand our facility, provide more parking. Heard you talk about volume in the parking lot and I couldn't help but 300 kids at VBS and what kind of DB that is or whatever, but maybe more of a violation than a generator. But anyway, yeah, we're grateful for the partnership and what they've shown to interact with the neighborhood, just even pulling Mark on board, who's a longtime San Clementanian. And even though they're from out of the area, I've been really concerned with the local. I did show up to a couple, I showed up to one of the neighborhood meetings and it was super encouraging. Actually, I heard a lot of good news about the church. People love the church. Complained about the outlet mall, but they liked the church. And, and then when they heard this, this use, they were excited about it as well, thinking of their grandparents and those kind of things. So anyway, we're excited about the opportunity. That's all I have, unless you have more questions for me. Nope?
I have a question for Mark. Ms. McGuire, you said.
Thank you, Mr. Ambrose.
You opened with some conditions to alleviate the noise concern. You open to a condition such as, for example, would do a, once you complete the construction and be in full operation, would do a post-operation field measurement of the noise? If the city staff can do it, we'll have the city staff to do it. If they can't, we'll hire a third party to do it, just to make sure that you meet that noise standards, city noise standards. We're not talking about the other ones. And if you don't meet that standard, then you need to implement extra measurement to bring it down to meet that standard. Is that okay for you?
You know, conceptually, I have no problem with that. The, again, you know, for example, taking the measurements of the, of the air conditioning units running, those are, I have every confidence are going to meet even at the property line if that's the test.
The only concern is the parking lot.
Yeah, and so if.
That's all. To the, to the residence, to the southwest of your.
Okay, and if the, and if the concern is the cumulative sound of kind of traffic trips coming in and out, that sort of thing? That's fine too. The notion of going over and, you know, trying, let's slam a Mercedes and see what a Mercedes door sounds like versus a Nissan door, I don't know exactly how you test that. I've always been a little bit curious about that as one of the standards in the city because there's a street that people park and they shut their doors, but we don't have a noise ordinance that says, hey, how loud was your door when you shut it? But having said that, I have no, no problem with a general's condition to be added that would say when the project's operating, we would do some analyses to here to see whether the cumulative noise levels are exceeding a threshold on that Cayo La Verde side. I don't have a problem with that. And by the way, we have no problem with any of the other conditions of approval or the new one that you added today. We're happy with all those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGuire. Any other questions, staff or the applicant? Okay, hearing, seeing no other questions, I'd like to close that section of the presentation, move on to public comment. We have two cards on this item. And the first is Mr. Mark McGuire.
Yeah, somewhere.
Okay. And Mr. Ambrose, all done. Okay. Thank you. I'll close the public comment section, open it up for a commission discussion. Mr. Wu.
I think I'm satisfied with the applicant's willingness to accept a condition we just talked about. Overall, I think it's a good project. And you, Ms. Blackwell, you mentioned a, it's a good catch about the trees. For a long time, I consider this project as a lack of vertical articulation. And the applicant went back and came back with a better design and then reversed that to be, to be a very flat roof ridge line design. Was a little disappointed. But if the trees, no, I like those trees we just showed on the elevation of facing the church. But if they're Phoenix rovolini, they're tiny. So, and hopefully we can have some trees to break that flat roof ridge. But now if you go to the small pygmy date palm, you don't have that landscape to soften the linear parting of the roof ridge. So if I see this one, I like this one. I like to hold the applicant to that instead of downsizing on the tree.
Well, so I can, I can speak to that. So there was some discussion at DRC about this. So the palms are shown here are not consistent with the current landscape plan. The current landscape plan shows the Phoenix rovolini flanking the entry, which is a lower, often seen in clustering presentation. It is a lower growing, it's more of a filler than it is for vertical, you know, that vertical effect that you see here. However, there are other trees that have been introduced and it's a crepe myrtle and you see the three that are adjacent to the street that have kind of a colorful purple flower. That is representative of the type of trees that will be along the front. You can see in the landscape plan, I think there, yeah, be three or four, maybe more along the front elevation as well as at the parking lot. And DRC had asked for that to help kind of soften the hard lines of the structure from the right away, freeway. So there is, there is going to be some, and they grow to be maybe 20 to 30 on a good day feet tall.
Oh, and then that would do.
Yeah. Okay. And just for clarification, if I can continue with Mr. Wu, the testing that you're asking for now, would this be post-construction but at peak, at peak occupancy after two years?
Post-occupancy because the most of concern coming from, once is in full, it's probably post-occupancy. Once is in full operation, people come and go. And because of the, the analysis has some minor deficiency here and because they are so close to the standard and some criteria in my viewpoint is a little dubious. I like, for example, once is, once the project reached the full occupancy, let's say two years after the completion of the construction, the city will do, at the applicant's cost, will do a field verification to measure the sound level along the perimeter next to the existing, next to Fair Harbor. I'm less concerned about Cayo La Verde. Most concern is from, is about the boundary on the southeast edge. And there's some residents here. That's, see, there's a parking space, they're really close to those homes. So I just want to make sure that instead of merely responding to people's complaint, which our code enforcement is stressed of everything, they don't usually respond promptly. So I like to make sure that the, so it will be on a peak hour. Even the sound analysis is a PM peak hour. And I go there after the info operation during the peak hour, measure the sound. If they exceed a certain. If they exceed a certain level out of their map to see cumulative how long they last, eventually to decide whether it meets the city noise standard or not. They, if not, the applicant needs to do something to adjust it. It could be another sound barrier wall or something else, I don't know.
Okay. Are we asking the applicant to bear that burden? Are we talking about doing-
That's what I propose.
Okay. Great, thank you. Commissioner Randall.
Yeah, I mean, we keep talking about peak hours. I've unfortunately been having to go to a facility for my mother-in-law for five years straight or whatever. There is no peak hour. It's a few people wander in and out, and then a shift's changed. And I assume three shifts are probably what they have, and there's, reading the parking study, I think it is extremely conservative how many trips they really are showing there, because I don't see this generating that. You've got the employees coming in, a few deliveries probably for food, et cetera, and I don't know if all the linen's being done onsite or not, but I think we're overestimating the number of trips. And I think with some control and having staff use the parking space, especially in the evening, away from those houses, like Mark had mentioned, I see that working very well. I'm not sure we have a, do we actually have a sound requirement for emergency generators? I don't think so.
Emergency generators are exempt.
Exactly. So, I, I mean, and I assume those are mainly just to meet the requirements for breathing apparatuses and whatnot that some people might have, or keeping batteries charged on stuff. So, I'm not as concerned about the, I think what we have in place can probably justify the sound requirements and whatnot. This is a far, for the neighbors in the, here, this is a huge improvement over the Lenars project with all the units and the light pollution that would be generated by all those individual dwelling units, et cetera. So, I think there's a great improvement. There is definitely a need in the town for it and the area. I think they'll be very successful. I like the new landscape plans. I think they are, are good, and I'm sure there's going to be some pushing and shoving when they get into this, so there'll be some changes. But I am good with this, and from what I could glean out of the SEQA findings, I'm in agreement with making the findings that that can move forward. So, on this one, I am in support of moving it on to city council, and want to say that Mark and the team that brought this forward was delightful to work with at the design review. So, I am supportive of the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Chachinsky.
I'm also supportive of the project. I think this is a great addition to the community, and the architects have done a great job. The only thing I would like to see, again, is the screening. I looked at drawing A3 dot one, and it has a street view of the roof. Again, the building is going to sit lower than, than a typical building, because it goes down on a hill. And you will be able to see, it shows on the picture, the one, two, three, four, several air conditioning units on the roof. So, just a little higher of a wall or something to shroud those a little bit more. But other than that, I think this is a great project, and I'm very supportive of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I've looked at it. I think the technical memorandum prepared was very well done. I think it's a good plan. I got on the tail end of DRC. It'd come a long way by the time I got there. I think the, I think the landscaping update with Pat Murphy looking at it is very well. I think it's overall a very balanced project, and I think I'm supportive of it and going to be willing to recommend forwarding it to council and just request Mr. McGuire tells where his room is going to be, and so I can be in the other quadrant. But, but other than that, I'm going to be supportive of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wu.
I do have, Commissioner Chachinsky talked about roof screening. That was something we talked about during a while with the design review meeting. I think at the time, we suggested that we add some trellis over the equipment well. I think that's a valid concern, because this is sitting relatively low, and a lot of people overlooking this building. It's, it's seeing the foreground of people's view toward the ocean, so I think I can, I can support a condition to add some roof screening, such as a trellis. As far as the noise, I want if, if you guys can support a noise field verification, let's say, if, well, a condition to the condition, if the city receives a noise complaint from residents, then we do a field of verification. Well, supposedly, it's a code, it's a noise code enforcement issue, we're going to do it anyway. But I think the, the key here is if we, if some, some residents nearby complain about the noise, then we'll have the applicant pay for that test. That's a condition. If no one complains, then we don't need to do it. So, I want to see if that can be acceptable by my fellow commissioners.
Gabriel, could you touch on that and what are the current steps you would take if there isn't a complaint for noise?
Yes, by chair, plant commissioners, just have a question, maybe, on the recommended If, if you wanted, like, a verification study of noise, is that if the code compliance determined there was a violation, after that, that's when the study would be required?
Let me clarify. My proposed condition would be, after completion and after the, after, two years after the completion of construction, if the city receives complaints from nearby residents about the noise, then a field of verification of the noise should be conducted at applicant's cost. If it determines, if it's determined that the city noise standard is not met, then the applicant should implement extra measures to mitigate that.
Okay. The only thing I would be concerned of is if we, the city can verify the complaint, and then that we're jumping straight to a study. And it should, we should allow code compliance to verify if there, there is a violation, and then address the violation there.
And those procedures are in place at this time?
Are in place.
For all projects?
Right. Because my only concern is if there is a complaint, but we can't verify it, and then we are requiring, so if it's unsubstantiated, then we are requiring the study. So, that would just, you know-
Okay. If there's a concern and it's verified by the city staff, then we do that study.
Yeah, that would probably be the preferable approach, too.
So, we have the city's-
If it was verified.
Code enforcement to verify it, but the study will be done by acoustic engineer.
Rather than staff doing the study?
Right.
Yeah, that'd be preferable.
Okay.
Yeah, and just for added value, that rule would apply all the time, not just two years, like, starting day one, year 10. You know, we have our standards for noise, and if there's a violation, it's a violation, and it needs to be mitigated, so. Okay, well, I, any other comments? Well, I do have a couple of comments. I was happy to see this project come along. It's, I think it's going to be a great use of land, though not originally envisioned. I think it's, sometimes things just kind of turn out differently than you thought, and sometimes it's a little bit better than you thought it would be. And I, I think this is a much-needed use, it's a care facility, and, you know, there is definitely a need for that in our communities. Good neighbor practices that have been put in place, I think, are commendable. I do appreciate the efforts that have made on the, on all the changes to the design, the landscape effects, the different architectural revisions that have been made. The applicant clearly listened to the city, and I think at the end of the day, we're going to have quite a nice-looking facility here. And it's going to be highly visible from our, from the Highway Five, across from the outlets. These are going to be two highly visible uses, and so the treatments are going to lend to just a positive, just a positive feel for folks driving through our town. I am happy to see some of the measures have been made, taken, that will be taken, to address some of the impacts, potential noise generators, even more so than necessary. Again, good neighbor policies here, just an extra above and beyond step that's been, that's been made here. Whether they needed to or not, they did, they did it, and I think that's great. I, I wanted to ask about the, the parking spaces, and, you know, the applicant had made some recommendations to, you know, potentially address some of the, maybe add a new condition to address the issues of those rear parking spaces. I don't think that's necessary. I think it'll be fine, and we start to see some problems with that, we address it down the road. But I think as designed, it's going to be great, and I think all the findings have been met, and I, for those reasons, am in full support of this project as well. So, with that said, I'll move on to Mr. Crandall.
I will make a motion.
Okay.
And I will make a motion for Resolution PC 20004, Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, recommending that the city council approve specific plan amendment 1901-4, tentative parcel map 1902-1, site plan permit 1902-2, architectural permit 1902-3, unconditional use permit 1909-4. For artist memory care facility, a request to develop a 72-bed memory care assisted living residence on 2.5 acres of vacant land located at assessor's parcel number 679-021-05, to be addressed as 2401 Cai Frontera, with a recommendation to staff to work with the applicant on confirming equipment screening is adequate on the roofs, and also that-
We have, we have staff conditions that were on one of the charts, too.
Excuse me?
Staff conditions.
Yeah, these additional-
Yes, and the additional conditions of approval as recommended by staff. And also that we understand that the landscape is shown on renderings does not match the landscape plan, landscape plan trumps, and make that clear to planning, city council when they review it.
Hold a second.
I'd like to make a, a motion to amend that-
A motion and a second, and now you have a motion to amend.
Yes, that the rooftop equipment not to exceed the ridge line. Otherwise, a trellis needs to be provided to cover or screen it.
Okay. Commissioner Crandall did add that to the, to the recommendation.
Recommendation for staff to do that. It was not a condition that I put in.
Okay. Okay, do I have a second to-
I've already, I'm sorry, go ahead. I interrupted.
Do you have a second to Commissioner Wu's amendment?
Amendment was, repeat the amendment again, please.
The amendment is that we don't know the size of the equipment. If the equipment exceeds the height of the ridge, then-
It can't by code.
The building is not at 25, so they can have the equipment go up to 25 and be higher than the ridge.
I'm sorry.
Just briefly, Mark McGuire. So, the, the equipment, the air conditioning is well in alcoves that are quite, quite a bit above, so they're below the ridge line, because the alcove walls are higher than-
How deep is the well?
The tricky thing that I think Commissioner Chachinsky's getting at is that from looking up above, at a certain angle, you may be able to see those in the, even though they're in alcoves. And I don't know what the best solution of that is. You know, you could do a little trellis or something. Sometimes that doesn't look any better than just hiding the equipment, making it similar color or something, and having it blend in on the roof. You know, we, this is a private view, so it's not a public view, that we were obligated to do a visual simulation of, but we did want to give some perspective from that first row of houses, if you will. You can kind of make out, you know, potentially that you would look down and see them, but they are below, below them, so maybe visually, you won't even be able to see them.
How deep is the well, and how tall are the-
Before we get too far into discussion, we've already closed that section of it.
And we're in motion.
Yeah, and we're in motion. So, thank you, Mr. McGuire, for the courtesy. I, just to comment on, there's been discussion on, on that visibility already. There is a restriction on how high that equipment can go. The applicant has already maintained that that equipment will not be visible from the right-of-way. And again, you know, angle is, it's a, it's one of those things that we're just not, you know, it's not something that we should really be addressing at this point. So, I think staff is receiving a recommendation with an added condition that any visibility would be addressed with some sort of lattice or coloration to the satisfaction of the director of planning. So, in terms of your amendment, do you want to withdraw that, and do you want to hold and receive a, try to receive a second?
You don't have a second.
One, a little second, it's automatic.
Okay. Just to be clear. Okay, so we do have a motion on the table, and do we have a second?
I second.
Okay. We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0. Congratulations. Okay, great. Okay, we are now moving on to item nine, new business. The planning commission is requested to identify a commissioner to fill a vacancy on the designer view subcommittee, rotating member schedule, and the coastal advisory commission. And that should be committee, by the way. Coastal advisory committee, just to correct. Yes. Okay, why don't we open this up for discussion? Anybody have a comment on this, or a recommendation?
I think we're pretty good firm ground at the coastal advisory committee position. We don't have to provide anymore. I think that that ordinance has passed, it's had its second reading, and so I understand that ordinance. We don't provide a member to that anymore.
There are only four meetings, and it's closed, so there's not really much. Once you pick it up, and a little learning curve, and I pick it up, there's not much we can contribute to that. So, I, plus, the city council already has a direction to reduce the size and not to send anyone to coastal committee, advisory committee in the future, so-
See, if we were to send someone, now there are five. If you send someone, because Parks and Rec hasn't provided anybody for the last two or three years, that means you're a six. So, now you've got this even vote type possibility.
Let's just not do it.
It's just, I, that's exactly the point I'm trying to make, is the ordinance has passed, it's had its second reading, we're not required to send anybody. Send one, anybody there anymore, so let's just not provide that name.
I can support that, in favor of that.
Do we need to have a vote or anything on that?
You want a straw vote on it, or?
Yeah. So, I'm in support of-
I propose that we do not provide a name or a member to the coastal advisory committee.
Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, so it's unanimous? Okay, how about the designer view subcommittee rotating member? What are we looking like now? What's the need, and anybody in this room or at the dais here interested?
Well, we had, we had Jason from March 11th and March 25th, and we had a project that just went through this last week, and I had mentioned at the meeting, it might be behooving us to have Mr. Blackwell sit in on the two tally spaces, so when that project comes back, we have three that previously reviewed that project. Which day are you talking about, then? That would be March 11th and March 25th. In other words, since he's the, already the alternate for it.
I am definitely in favor of that. I'm wholeheartedly in. However, I do have a conflict on March 11th. I have another professional obligation that I- I have another professional obligation that I need to attend to.
Thank you for considering us professionals.
Then Chair, oh, by the way, you can go March 25th, then have maybe Mr. Relling to fill 11th. Everybody got a three.
Okay. Well, he's not here, but-
So he can't-
It's easy to throw.
He can't defend himself. So would either Brown or Kozinski like to fill that?
Kozinski, okay.
Which day is that again?
On March 11th.
At what time?
4:00, 4:00 P.M. I can do it.
You can do that? Okay. Mr. Brown will be there?
That's our Commissioner Brown.
Is that okay, or is that regular consistency you wanted there?
No, that's good.
That's good. Okay, so count me in on the 25th.
So these are projects you've already seen a couple of times that are coming back?
Maybe. We don't know if that one's-
Then how fast the applicant can turn them around?
So that would be Brown on the 11th and Blackwell on the 25th of March. Filling the two slots for Jason Talia.
So what happens to the alternate position there? Blackwell stays, Blackwell, I guess.
Yeah, as a backup in the event that you cannot.
Okay.
Well, I couldn't be there, actually. So that would be a problem.
So you might want to suggest an alternate for the 11th?
So maybe-
The alternate would be Kozinski since he's the-
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
And then what about February 26?
Blackwell's already in. Oh, Talia's...
Yeah, Commissioner Brown.
I'll be there.
You're going to be there? You plan to be there, though?
I'll be there. I mean, we should have a backup in the event that-
Something comes up.
I could serve-
You're stuck in traffic.
Yeah, that happens.
Would you be an alternate from the 26th, February 26th?
Okay.
Got it?
Commissioner Kozinski takes lion's share of the workload.
Well handled. I think we have our positions all set up.
I'm on the 11th, right?
Did you get those, Eileen?
I did.
I'm impressed. I'm all- I'm on the 11th, right? For tally, March 11th. Okay. And then Blackwell's back in on the 25th?
Yeah. Okay. Everybody happy? Okay, so moving on to item 10, old business, seeing none. We'll move on to item 11, reports of commissioners and staff. Are there any reports from commission or staff?
No reports.
Okay, no reports.
Anything controversially coming our way? Or anything you need to brief us on in our schedule here?
Oh, yeah, I can do that. I have-
Any questions? Anything coming up? We will have our next planning commission meeting on March 4th.
At loss findings, and you're it right now.
Yeah, which I will not be present for because I will be attending the city requirement to go learn how to be a better planning commissioner up in Sacramento.
Now, has everybody been told on who wants to go to those, and are they all filled in?
Yes. Yeah, so we have Vice Chair Blackwell attending the Planning Commissioners Academy, and then I believe Commissioner Woo, you'll be attending the California Preservation Conference, Sacramento. That's in May. That's in May. So thank you.
The planning commission, I think, about five times. I don't think I-
I'm looking forward to it. I haven't been to one yet, so.
Question, is anyone planning to be out that meeting on the 4th?
Other than myself?
Yeah. So we'll have a quorum.
I'm assuming that last night, the council voted just to let us float it, although we have until next year.
Correct. Okay, great. Moving on to item 12.
I do have item-
Oh, I'm so sorry.
City planner, last time, I asked you whether it's possible to have our city attorney to give us a briefing on new laws taking effect for 2020. As far as we understand, there are some new law governing a few items that's related to our land use and planning, housing, et cetera.
So there are new accessory dwelling unit laws that are effective in January this year. So we did update some of our standards because actually we don't have a new ordinance consistent with that new law. So... But we have some guidance that we do provide for the public. So we could have a presentation to the planning commission at a... Maybe the next or a future meeting.
So this... Some of these changes require an update to the ordinance we just passed about a year or so ago?
We'll have to update the ordinance again.
Is that the only thing?
Sorry.
Is that the only thing?
Well, I mean, there's probably other laws that were passed that are probably of interest to the planning commission, like housing laws that were passed, several. So, you know, we could either consider doing that, or I'm not sure if the attorney's office actually has a presentation already prepared on that.
I'm interested to have a legislative update type of thing.
Yeah, well, there are, I mean, there are hundreds of laws. So having a conference of update would be lengthy. The laws that impact our work the most are the housing laws. And we do have PowerPoints that have been presented at conferences on that. We could pare that down. I doubt you'd want to sit through a two-hour lecture on housing laws. But, I mean, they've been very busy in Sacramento. So it's really the commission's-
Senator Weiner.
Yes, our good friend Senator Weiner is the one who's been the most busy. So it's really the commission's discretion, but there have been literally hundreds of laws that have been adopted that affect local land use and planning, and we certainly have some presentations. Not sure how much of that you want to see.
Has your staff seen their presentations?
Haven't seen the presentations, but we talk about these laws quite a bit.
Because in the past, we've thrown like an 11-to-1 day, someday during a week, to just almost do it like a webinar and just have you present it.
We had a CEQA lecture from when they were associated.
Yeah, we could certainly do that. I mean, my colleagues have been doing this roadshow now for the past six months or so. This is, I mean, it's canned at this point, so it's not a problem to present that. There are laws that will significantly impact the way we do business here going forward, so we can put that together.
Gabriel, can we do that as a study session?
I think we could do that as a study session, yeah. We can coordinate with-
Prior to a meeting?
It'd be a one-hour thing, whereas a Brown Bag thing could be a couple of hours long.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
CEQA training, I think that way, a couple of years ago during an 11-to-1 type thing, very good.
So and then for accessory dwelling units, that could just be a study session all its own, so that might be something separate from that?
Okay. Even though we may not be seeing a lot of those up here, right?
Yeah, because those all have to be ministerial.
Right. So... Okay, well, thank you. Commissioner Chachinsky, you had a comment about maybe paring something down into about an hour presentation?
Yeah. The two-hour lecture, is it possible to go through it in one hour?
Maybe we can get the ADU thing in, too, pare that down and do a summary. You know, we're not going to be looking at a lot of these, if any. Would it be nice to have like a little, like an update on the change and all that? Maybe we could kind of feather it all together into one study session? Right? Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Okay. Next, item 12 is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Anybody like to make a motion?
I move to adjourn to next adjourned regular meeting of the planning commission on March 4th, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. in council chambers located at 100 Avenue of the City of San Clemente, California.
You have a second?
Second.
We'll give this one to Commissioner Chachinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.